All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Those of you that are here in person, administrators, good evening. And those of you that are online, thanks again for joining us, also faithful. Today is Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. May we call our regular meeting of the South Euclid and Hurst Board of Education to order? Mr. Hill, it is now five thirty-six.
Ms. Falkenberg?
In route.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. King?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
In route.
Mrs. Shelby?
Here.
All right, thank you for that. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The little things in life that matter, right? We can go right into two point one liaison reports. Mrs. King, do we have a report this evening?
No report, no student liaison report.
No problem, thank you. I believe Ms. Falkenberg will have one for us next week, next meeting?
I think so.
Perfect. Hmm, she's on recess.
I bought her some time.
She doesn't have it.
Oh.
No. We can go right into item two point two, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board of Education, all community members, stakeholders watching online. So have a few updates for you we're excited about, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hall. First one being, last, yesterday, we had our end of year chiefs, chief of police and fire department leadership meeting led by Assistant Superintendent Melissa Thompson. And this is something that we do three times during the year, just continue to build that relationship, collaboration with our local law enforcement. And also, I noticed, right before the meeting, fun, great announcement to make, in partnership with the South Euclid Police, we will be bringing back crossing guards to Adrian, Roland, and Greenview. So shout out to Chief Mays, who started this initiative, contacted Ms. Thompson, Mr. Hill, and myself. And we did a, we did a meeting, and in partnership, those will be ran through the police department, but we will be having three crossing guards starting sometime in January or February. So very excited about that, and we appreciate all of our local law enforcement and fire departments.
Is that one at each?
Uh, I think it's-
Preliminary?
Preliminary.
Okay.
Well, and remember, Greenview starts early, so some of them will be shifted over. I'll have more details in the next, next meeting as well. Another thing we're excited about, me personally excited about today, if you were a freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior at Brush High School, you received an email from my executive assistant, Ms. Miller, and we are, I'm starting a student advisory council, and we're gonna have, it's an application process. Don't worry, it's not too many. Looking to have three students from each grade level, so it'd be twelve, twelve total students. And I want to hear about their student body experience, their insights, and how we can improve the educational, their educational experience, and really pick their brains. So the deadline is January tenth, so you'll get a reminder after holiday break on January sixth, Ms. Miller already has it in her calendar. And then on January tenth will be the deadline, we'll start to go through the applications, we'll choose twelve. And then those meetings will kick off in February, March, April, and May. And then next year, those same students will have the opportunity to reapply, and we'll start those in September next year and go the, go the full year. So something we're excited about. Other, when we talk about partnerships, communication, and visibility, the Donuts, Donuts with Dom is what it's now being tagged, has been going well. I've hit all the buildings minus Brush and the maintenance building, which are happening tomorrow morning. So we have Brush at seven or seven fifteen, and then the maintenance at eight thirty. It's been great just to sit down with the staff, no, no agenda on my end. They've just been coming in with topics they wanted to discuss. I asked them to bring action plans on some of those topics that they wanted to discuss, and it's, it's been, it's been going really well. Want to give a shout out to Ann and Carrie in the kitchen department. They've done an awesome job. The spreads have been fantastic with the Donuts. They even created a menu. Can take no credit for that, as I tell all the teachers when they're in these meetings, but it's been, it's been really nice just catching up with all staff, I'm having that opportunity with them. So something that I can see us continuing, and when Josh is fully healed, he's coming with me. Another thing that's on the horizon related to community relations visibility is community groups. This is something that be on the lookout for, starting in January. This group will serve as a forum for open dialogue and collaboration on key district initiatives. Last board meeting, we discussed the mast, the building master facilities plan, and as I promised, stakeholder involvement, teacher involvement, community involvement's gonna be critical to that. So again, looking for, looking for a divide, diverse group. We're gonna have a little mini application process from that. Trick I took from the OSBA conference was went to listen to a few superintendent roundtables, and a couple that have done these groups really look for outside entities. So you're looking for business people, looking for people who know construction, looking for people who've been teachers, kind of that full array of people, trades, expertise, to really bring us all together and provide insight. So the goal is to create that platform, and that will be coming out in January. And the last one, today, actually, we had our AI meeting with the teachers. This was based off the survey that I asked teachers to fill out, and kudos to them. I had over three hundred surveys filled out by the teachers. We were fifty fifty on teachers that have not used AI, and fifty percent of the teachers had. So to me, that was best case scenario. We're gonna plan our AM session, so eight thirty to eleven thirty on, in February, is gonna be AI-driven, led by teachers. And when we look at the committee and what we're trying to do, the people that are currently in the committee, or people that I just handpicked, we have administrators, teachers. And now we're gonna take those survey results, see how the CID goes in February, and then make a diverse committee that hits grade levels, grade bands, special education, and all of those things. And I also updated them on the ODEW push for AI. Myself, Leanne Rysland, Ron Johnson are attending virtual meetings monthly. There's seven different modules that are being led by the ODEW and everything related to AI, from starting committees to policies to teacher resources. And our whole goal for the February CID, this isn't another thing for teachers, this is not a mandate that they have to use AI. We look at this as AI is here. So the number one thing that our goal for February is for them to get acquainted with AI. And I look at AI, and this is the model that we're gonna be using, to improve teachers' quality of life, at the same time, improving instruction in the classroom. And we think AI can do both of those, because it can serve as a time manager and also provide staff, teachers with fresh ideas, quick lesson plans, and all, everything that encompasses. So in conclusion, we're making significant strides in building stronger relationships with our community, with our police, reaching out to the students, parents, and enhancing communication and constantly innovating through AI. And looking forward to these initiatives as they unfold. It's not something that's on paper, it's things that are in action, and I'll continue to update as things unfold. And that ends my report. Any questions on any of that? Saw you smiling, you starting to get the email today?
I did.
Okay.
Maybe this isn't a question for you, maybe it's a question for the city. So did the city come together with the police department, and that's how they got to?
Yeah, actually, it was kind of reversed.
Because I know before, the budget didn't permit, and we had those cuts with the city.
Yeah, and that's where Chief Mays came in, and when he was looking at his budget for the new year, which you, which you know is being, was just approved-
Yes.
-by council, and with, I'm not sure how he did his budget or any of that, but however he worked it in, he was able to get it to have, for them to accept the budget, so hats off to the council, Chief Mays. And then on our end, what we said we would do is we chipped in to help him and support him.
Because that's kind of what we do with Lynn Hurst as well, if I'm not mistaken. They pay a-
I don't know.
I feel like I almost feel like-
Our SRO contracts are different.
Okay. All right, perfect. Um, are you going to Donuts with Dom, Ashley? Just wanted to put that out there.
I mean, it's tempting.
Okay.
They did look so good from the last time.
No credit.
That's all. I don't have any further questions, that was all for me.
And then the, the second, oh, go ahead.
Oh, to item two point three, Eddie Hall and the Gear Up program?
Absolutely. So thank you, board, appreciate you guys giving me an opportunity to talk to y'all for a little bit about something we're pretty excited about. Put it up, all right, cool. So again, we were awarded a Gear Up grant, along with some other first ring schools. We have started the planning process, and I'll kind of go through all the pieces and parts of it, but like, what is Gear Up? And so kind of just their creed, and like, what are they? Gear Up's a comprehensive program designed to increase the academic performance and preparation for students for post-secondary education. And they really are going to be like a holistic approach to how are we getting kids to the next level after high school? So some of their goals, and you'll kind of see that they're not just all strictly what are we doing post-high school, it's how do we be, create that student who is ready for that? So boosting academic performance and post-secondary preparation, increasing high school graduation and college participation rates, enhancing knowledge, supporting students as they choose their pathway, providing comprehensive services, and promoting awareness on diverse post-secondary opportunities. And again, I want to just point at that one, because it is so important for our students, and I think we've made great strides in showing them in this room here specifically the multitude of opportunities that they have. It's, it's not just one specific thing, I know a nurse in my family, I want to be a nurse. It's what kind, where, how, like, what kind of hours are you even looking for? Do you want to go to school? How long do you want to go to school? Do we want an entry-level position? And so really doing that kind of work, and this is just gonna help us take it to the next level with more funds and things like that. All right, so Gear Up Investments and Professional Development for Teachers, which is gonna be great, exposure opportunities for college and career, culture change, student activities. And then again, a piece that, as you were just speaking about, and that we're really focused on, is the ability for us to reach out to family and caregivers and run different events that they're gonna run in addition to academic supports that we have, and they're going to, again, boost up, whether it's from an opportunity that we have working with CSU or other areas in developing, like, college students, especially those in our educational plan, or educational programs, coming in and being tutors and mentors and things like that. And so that, those are all processes that we are working and outlining. The target population, Gear Up begins in sixth grade. For us, it's even better, because we're gonna actually have a cohort of all of our sixth graders and all of our seventh graders. A big difference in what we have compared to some of the stuff before, it was only, a lot of times Gear Up was only for first-generation students, and they're for all students. And this is just like so impactful, it's not just one grade band, we're getting both. And what this will do is it's actually gonna track up with students. So we will be going all the way through, as you guys can see up there, their first year out of high school and tracking, how did this really work? How did, was it impactful? And I think they said it best, and I'll bring it back to here, the big thing with Gear Up is it's kind of like a wave in what they want to do, in that it's raising everything, and we're finding things that we really like, and we're able to kind of sustain them and keep them, and how do we keep things sustainable through the Gear Up program? Even though that, like earmarked money will continue to move up with that two-grade bands of students, right? So Gear Up, kind of just overview, early financial aid awareness, academic and social and emotional preparations, campus visits, comprehensive support and post-secondary readiness, and Gear Up Family Nights and Engagement. And keep in mind, our Gear Up program will also pay for a College Now representative that is gonna implement a lot of the programming. And so we're getting someone, not through our budget, that they're paying for, to just kind of help this work move forward. Because if you'll talk to anybody sitting in any of these things, college and career readiness, which I, I know here and a few other places, it's not done in a silo, it's not done by a person. It's done by a group and a collective and working forwards, towards that. And so they kind of just are another piece and part of it, with their connections through College Now, that Gear Up kind of pays for the money. So if you look at it, Gear Up's kind of the grant, College Now's kind of the people implementing part of the process in conjunction with us, right?
So is that a secondary College Now representative?
Yeah.
At the high school with College Now, so we're not stretching the high school representative?
We are not. So that is something completely different that we do. This person will work strictly with their grade bands, which is starting with our sixth and seventh graders. Then they'll move up next year, be with our seventh and eighth graders, move up to be with our eighth graders, ninth graders, so on and so forth.
Okay.
So that person is specifically for there, only there, and we do our own thing with what's happening now for our College Now representative and the fast for work, and you know, parents coming in and doing those kinds of things, which is happening every, today was Tuesday, Tuesday.
Every Tuesday.
Yep.
Is Gear Up also an extension of the work that you are doing on the college and career side?
Yeah.
So it's an extension of there?
Absolutely. So it'll be an extension. It'll be, it'll be another person that, you know, I am lucky enough to be able to oversee and help them kind of build this out and be another set of eyes, and really track those two groups of students, so that we have some more, you know, not only qualitative, but quantitative data, and like, these things are working, because they're working with those two groups. Because again, me, one person here at the high school, hard, district-wide, they got sixth and seventh grade, and they're gonna track up and be able to go through that. And actually, I'll show you a couple of things later, that like, some key points that we want to track, like algebra in ninth grade, passage rates, right? Are we doing the right things to make sure students are passing at this level? So I'll definitely get to that point. So but again, campus visits, things that we do right now, but again, this will be another person to be able to do this and help with us there. Comprehensive support and post-secondary readiness, so all those different things, and again, just taking it to another level and helping us. So again, financial literacy workshops, benefits of saving money, understanding wages, earning a living, early awareness on financial aid workshops. So unpack, unpacking that financial aid and exploring ways to kind of save early. Again, these are things that we could be doing with communities. We'll talk to the kids, but we want to be doing these with families and getting them out. And again, how do we schedule these kind of bigger nights? Because we're like, hey, this is exciting, this is what we want to do, and you know, they really front a lot of the money, whether it's, you know, we're doing dinner, or we're doing this event. And how do we tie that into our community, things that will help us get individuals out, because it's something great to talk about. It's something that, you know, I think a lot of our parents are excited about. So college and career exposure, so again, you know, career campus visit, so things like this, again, that we do at the high school. But again, it's gonna be more, it's impactful, because now we can do this in sixth grade and seventh grade, where we're talking about budgets and things like that. But like, we'll take students out to, we could say Swajcik or Lincoln Electric, just to kind of like see that. It's not like a dreary place, it's not a, oh, I gotta go to work here, that people are excited, and it's nice, and it's lit up, and, and people are driving nice cars in the parking lot, because you know, the work is really phenomenal for them, right? So all these different things, and getting to talk to people who are actually doing the work. So not only are we gonna be able to do that here, but I can do that for a group of sixth graders, seventh graders, and really start that conversation earlier. Which again, is another piece and part that we always want to do, is how do we continue to push that conversation lower and lower, so that our students are coming here with a focus? And so much of the time, when we talk about students and figuring out, you know, what high school's about, that shift that we often see in high schoolers to true young adults, right, they're all young adults, but you get the point, so what I'm saying is, when that goal really becomes impactful, and I see what I'm doing. And I'm kind of like going to high school, but I'm going to high school with a purpose, because this is what I want to be. And so again, the earlier they get that, the more impactful that is, and I'm not waiting later on to, okay, now I gotta focus in and get this together. And I'm doing that at a younger age, I'm seeing that at sixth and seventh grade, and I'm walking in, yeah, this is what I want to be, and this is what I'm gonna strive for, will only help us, right? So that's a big key piece to this, and seeing that career, and then the college, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Yeah!
So is Gear Up an actual business that we are, like, employing, or they?
No, Gear Up is a grant, so federally funded grant, and they are, again, it's, so it's kind of, kind of weird. So Gear Up is a grant, so just picture them as the money.
Right.
And College Now is a company that they are gonna pay for-
Got it.
-to help us do things and have other earmarked funds for us to do things outside of just what they do.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, that's what I'm here for.
Started through the ESC.
Yep.
And we were awarded these two grants through the ESC.
All right, one more.
As many as you need.
So, um, you're, you're one person.
Yes.
Gear Up is the money.
Yes.
College Now is the work on the ground.
Yes.
You know, I'm very protective of my student services department in my assistant superintendent's office.
Absolutely.
How much logistically is falling on that office to help you facilitate utilizing that grant?
I think all, like, we're kind of planning all those pieces and parts right now.
Okay.
I feel very confident in all of our offices and being able to do that, and I can even, like, I, we've already know who's gonna kind of start working for us. They've already worked on hiring people, I have meetings at the ESC, as we're kind of collaborating.
Okay.
That's the other piece I, and a little bit on, that we get to, is that because it's not just us, and we have a whole ESC collaborative.
Okay.
A lot of times, some of the difficult pieces is keeping up with like that qualitative data, and how do we do all this? But because it's the, through the ESC-
They kind of do a lot of that legwork.
So much of it, it puts us in such a great spot to do the work, and they keep us kind of, I'm dropping the word, but okay for the grant. What's the word? That we're not doing things wrong. Compliant, yes, they keep us very compliant. And so we'll be able to pull those kinds of things there. So whether we're bouncing off ideas from Richmond, and we're talking to Warrensville and everybody else, it's kind of a part of this too. So there's also other people to pull from. Does that make sense?
Okay. No, that makes a lot of sense. I just, I know we are definitely family engagement and student services department heavy, so I always like to ask that question to see, because them gears are running.
Yeah, no, 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 they-
That is nice, because-
That's true.
Like Mr. Hall said before, they're, we're actually have somebody paid for by them, that's gonna look like our full-time employee-
Yeah.
-over this.
Okay.
We don't pay for them.
Nope.
They're through them, but they'll be here every day.
Okay.
They'll be living at the junior high next year.
Yeah, they'll live at the junior high next year, because there'll only be seventh and eighth grade this year. I'll get to it in a second, hoping to roll out, you know, after we get back from the holidays, and kind of be split between sixth grade and seventh grade, but next year, all middle school, then split again, but it'll be good. And then college, go ahead.
If I may, just although we work very closely together, I do want to acknowledge, and would be remiss if I do not, acknowledge the fact that it's really the Office of Curriculum and Instruction with Mrs. Bastock that is gonna run point most with this effort. And so with our changes and my role changing, I've been doing a lot directly, of course, with Mr. Cable, and of course, everything, it's just supporting everything. But I want to definitely give credit where credit is due, that Mrs. Bastock's gonna really be a credit point with this.
Well, that's good. We know historically, everything ran into student services, and student services running away without batteries in their back. It's not pleasant, so, okay. All right, Ms. Bastock, you better get those Energizer batteries ready. All right. That's good to know, thank you.
Yes, sure.
How were the professional sites selected?
So how are the professionals? So again, typically at the high school, what I want to employ down there is we'll do, just like, through Google, and we'll put out a survey, whatever kind of hits, whatever's high, like last year would have been electricians, a lot of people just said, hey, I want to be electrician. So we went and visited, and we went to visit the apprenticeship program. I always try to do at least one of the manufacturing programs that's specifically hiring, because sometimes the manufacturing companies, like, say, oh, yeah, we want people in, we want people in. But really, what did you hire this cycle? And so those are questions that, being in this position as long as I have, been afforded to, and appreciate it. Questions that I ask, and like, so how many people did you hire? Okay, how many are we actually looking to hire? And they're, they're honest with me, and so we try to always go to at least one of those and be specific, and then everything else might be, again, just interest. So we try to do the piece apart. So I'm gonna pick something that I think is really important, I at least want you to see, and then I'm also gonna grasp on like, okay, we have eight, ten, twelve, twenty, whatever, number of kids that say, this is what I want, okay, cool, then I'll find that, I'll figure it out, and we'll go.
Awesome. I would, I would also love to see some of the South Euclid and Lynn Hurst businesses highlighted, like, like Roche Ling or the City of Lynn Hurst, for students to see, like, different levels of, like, career development and professionalism-
Absolutely.
-also, you know, right here in their own backyard.
Yeah, yeah. So at our college and career fair, like Express, it was right down the street, so they were one, they've been really kind to us. We had veterinary assistant, they have a, they have a really great program, a vet tech program, like, right down the street that is a way that you don't have a lot of school, but you, you can kind of get in and work with animals, as far as just being a veterinarian. So hundred percent, we'll continue to work on that process, and you know, some of our, we also have some great community partners too. So, yeah, absolutely, so thank you, I appreciate that. College and campus visits, we'll just, we'll say that, you know, understanding that, we're going, we're seeing those kinds of pieces. We've done a lot of cool things that we're not just go to a campus, take a tour behind the scenes. We get to sit down and talk to individuals who are really doing it, professors, and they've kind of been great to us, so I'll keep going. Sorry. So again, the career awareness piece, I kind of already harped on that, so we'll continue through. Post-secondary preparation, we're talking about, again, those visits. A thing I wanted to talk a little bit about is about summer programs, something we can kind of get to. Again, something else for our students to do, a program that I love, maybe that is, we spend three days on a college campus, right? What does that really look like over the summer? So it's the things that we can build to, right? I'm probably not doing that with our sixth graders right yet, but it's definitely something that, that's what I'm looking at, that's kind of something in my mind, as we continue to plan for more than just the next year, as we can plan for the life of this grant, which is like seven years, if I did not say that earlier. So again, Gear Up Family Nights, Gear Up really wants to plan engaging family nights, going through those different things and things that will be important, whether it's, again, financial aid, college preparedness, career exploration, and again, that's not just maybe for students and also families too. So again, anytime that we can kind of hit both and add value to what the parents are doing and what the students are doing, I, we think that's great. And again, that's something that they are, will earmark monies for us to use, that doesn't come out of our budget, it just adds to what we do. So it's, we're in such a good spot, because we do so many great things, where some districts maybe don't have all of those funds, where we can do things- where we can do things and we're going to add, whereas sometimes, some districts, that's all they have, so that's why it's so great to be here in South Euclid and Lynnhurst. So again, I'm not going to read through all this, but examples of just different activities they have. So again, we do college and career fairs, but there's Gear Up swag, they buy different things, whether it's pencils, and this is important. Field trips, we talked about the programming, transition, they've created senior lounges places. During the summer, they'd have cooking lessons that were math-focused, you know, all these different types of things that they've done in different districts that they could bring to us, we can alacard it, we can pick things that we think are going to be most important for us. And again, like if they, you know, are buying pencils for, you know, like the middle school, or we have like a career fair, and they're bringing people in or bringing a speaker in, even if you're not quite in that band, but it's something that doesn't cost additional funds, we can just utilize it, and if it would cost additional funds, well then it just offsets what we would already be doing, because we do so much of this. So it helps, go ahead. Yeah.
I know a few years ago, we brought in a team of our former students who were in college
Yeah.
to talk about college life, do we do?
Absolutely, so Swerzky just had one of our former students in there.
Don't listen to Swerzky.
I know, I know, I know, but, but he actually did, Carla just came in, she's down in Miami, she's about to graduate, she was just in the classroom and really just spoke to students about her experience and what she was doing here, and she, and again, it was really cool, because she could speak to like, butting heads with Notton and still like really loving and appreciating different things with him, like through that experience, again, we like talked about that, her Swerzky, and he was almost kind of taken aback that she was so, how well she did, because, you know, our kids grow and they flourish, and she, you know, a lot of that, and she says, because of the things I learned here, and the lessons I learned and told the students. And so yeah, that's great, and I think it's something that we continue to grow. But yeah, 100% we do, we bring kids back, Claude was just in, talking about his first year at OU and the things that he does there, Chet always has different guys come back, and maybe that's more of a sports thing, but I'm talking about the academic ones, where those two.
Right, yeah.
So yeah, so yes, the answer's yes, and those are the actual people and names.
Nice.
So getting close to the end right here, and we talk about our Gear Up objections, objectives. Couple of the big things here, we talk about that Algebra I passage rate, you know, looking to, can we push that to 60% or better, right? That's just their benchmark, we're always striving for as much as we can do and as high as we can go. We talk about hitting our attendance rates, promotion, on time for successful grades, or students moving on. Is Gear Up helping students continue to be academically eligible and being, and becoming in the right grade? Like those kinds of things that they want to look at, because that's important to them. We talk about SAT and ACT scores, they look at student graduation rate, they want to talk about, you know, that 45% students being enrolled in higher education, so like all those pieces and parts, are they actually doing the FAFSA? Which we kind of do, we'll knock that one out of the park, because that's one's kind of been important to us, but that's just something else that they're looking at. And then what are our current and former students who are in that Gear Up first, first group, like our bands? What are they doing? So again, knowing what we're doing right after high school can kind of help us continue to plan and plot for what we want to do best. And then finally, a couple of the last things is, you know, students will have educational aspirations defined by documents in the college or career pathway, so are we really developing these plans that they host and they have? And then, you know, again, stuff with the families, are we reaching out, are we hitting this mark, are we, are we having impacts and outcomes? And then finally, we talk about that timeline, planning design, we want to be get this going in January. We already have somebody hired for our district, which is going to be great, a lot of districts, you know, as they're kind of working through it, I think they're maybe halfway through the hirings, but because I kind of knew the people who were working it, and they were like, yeah, we'll get you guys rolling, because we're, we're up on it, we've done everything, we've turned in all of our documents, do everything we need, they know we're ready to roll and implement some of this. So we're, we're rolling, we plan meetings at the ESC, which is, you know, I already talked about it a little bit, but that's what kind of takes a lot of this off our plate, because they have different people there who will keep us compliant and doing everything that we need to do, and also, you know, we'll, we'll update our stuff and they kind of stay on top of it, so it's great. And then, you know, the grant cycle, again, we'll have that for seven years, so, yeah, that's Gear Up kind of an adjust, and I hope that helps.
You said the grant cycle is seven years?
Seven years, yeah, we're going to have this grant for seven years.
I thought that was September 1st to August 31st.
Yeah, that's just, again, that's their cycle, like for monies to come out.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay.
Yeah, 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 no, 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 no.
I'm like, I know I can count.
So yeah, for seven years, we'll have it.
Okay, so that's perfect. So a lot of, a lot of families go back and watch these videos after they've occurred, so I'm glad that we asked quite a few questions. And just to clear up, Gear Up is the grant money.
Yes.
The funding.
Yep.
College Now is the vehicle to help utilize the money and reach the families and the students, and the students and the families are the ones that are benefiting from the grant utilizing College Now in this different capacity from what we do at the high school.
Yeah, 100%.
I just wanted to clear that up, so they would have it.
And we have a large impact on what's going to fit our district best, because they can do so many things.
Okay.
So that's where our role comes in, in saying like, hey, this is what's going to help our families, this is what we want to see, and then they can kind of implement it and just give us an extra person, because it's one person, team, they have a team, they have connections, I have connections, we have other people with connections, so utilizing all that together.
Okay, I like the concept of pulling back to the younger kids, because you see a lot of push in the high school, because they're so close to college, and I don't know about a lot of other families, but I look at my family and some of our kids in my family who didn't really think about college until they got to high school, struggled when they got to college, because they were trying to jump in, they're 18, they really didn't have any exposure, didn't know what to expect, and they kind of nosedived. So to see sixth grade, all the way down to sixth grade, that's something that's, I'd be intriguing to see the data on that, so that's good.
And you will have it, because we have to stay compliant.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hall.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Hall. Found out about this grant through the ESC, he was all over it, and like you said, the other piece that he mentioned, they, they follow up after they graduate, which really helps us, because part of the report card now is we have to know where our kids are. Ms. Bastock talked about that during hers, so at least we know that there will be a process through them that will really help us as well, moving forward.
All right, Mr. Hill, do we have any public comment? Hearing none, we can go right into item three, the minutes, 3.1. The minutes of the special meeting of December 10th, 2024 will be approved as recorded or corrected. The reading of these minutes will be waived, may we get a motion to approve item 3.1?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mrs. King and Ms. Falkenberg?
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Uh, item four, treasurer's report, go right into 4.1.
Good evening, recommend for approval, item 4.1, the financial reports for month end of November. Item 4.2, the bank reconciliation for month end of November. Item 4.3, the investment earnings for month end of November. And then item 4.4, we have four donations for approval down there.
May we get a motion to approve items 4.1 through 4.4?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Shelby and Ms. Falkenberg?
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
Yes. What is Ozobot coding?
Go ahead, what did you say she's?
Thank you.
What did you say Catherine, I'm sorry?
What is Ozobot coding at Adrian? Is that what the kids at Greenview were doing last year?
Oh, not with fun.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if it's exactly, it's a coding program.
Okay.
Yeah, for the students.
For the year, okay. And thank goodness that Forest City is helping to protect our trees, because so many can see get attacked by insects or disease, so thank you Forest City again.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Item five, superintendent's item certified personnel?
Under certified personnel, you'll see change of assignments, paid leave absences and unpaid, unpaid leave of absences, seeking the board's approval, those items listed, and I left out the resident educator program and facilitators that we have going on.
May we get a motion to approve item 5.1?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. King, Mrs. Shelby, any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye. Item six?
Under 6.1, classified personnel, seeking the approval, under, under six, you're going to see appointments, a lot of ISAs, as well as some resignations and change of assignments, and as, as well as paid leave of absence. Seeking the approval under item six.
May we get a motion to approve item 6.1?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Falkenberg, Mrs. Shelby, any questions or comments?
I just have one comment, I want to give a shout out to the HR department, as well as exceptional children, getting all these ISAs in now, is not an easy task, so I just wanted to say thank you to both Jen and Bill.
Hearing no further questions or comments, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Item seven?
Under seven, supplemental contracts, you'll see that, seeking the approval for National Elementary Honor Society, as well as girls indoor track and a unpaid volunteer.
May we get a motion to approve item 7.1?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Falkenberg, Mrs. King, any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item eight?
Item eight, human resources, seeking the approval for one agreement, and that's it, under HR today.
May we get a motion to approve item 8.1?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Shelby, Ms. Falkenberg, any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Item nine?
Under nine, business items, you'll see the yearly contract, three-year contract with Life Touch, who does all of our photos for students and extracurriculars, as well as DJ agreement for the big junior high dance at the end of the year, can never be too early on those, and a regional sewer district agreement, seeking the approvals 9.1 through 9.3.
May we get a motion to approve items 9.1 through 9.3?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Falkenberg, is that Ms. King? Mrs. Shelby? Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, just, I know this might seem out of place, but any, and Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is so important as far as leading the way for recycling and helping people learn how to be proactive as far as their use of chemicals, et cetera, so I thank them.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Item 10?
10 or 11.
Item 12.
Big winners. Just seeking, under, under exceptional students, just seeking the approval for the amend, addendum listed. Under 12.1, that's it.
May we get a motion to approve item 12.1?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. King, Mrs. Falk, Mrs. King and Ms. Falkenberg, any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Uh, board information, item 13.1. Any board members have any information? King, Catherine, Shelby? What did we talk about?
You will be giving us our schedule for next year, right?
For?
Giving our reports to the cities.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
We will work on that. Our, our meetings for this month are done, didn't you have, did you have all the December, Ashley?
Mm-hmm.
So those are done.
Dun, dun, dun.
Any new and unfinished business? Why do I feel like we have a question about something?
Schedule for next year.
Schedule.
The schedule for next year.
Board meeting schedule and timing, you want to?
Um.
Talk through that?
We did want to talk through that. So, well, a couple of things. So board, we got the, everybody got the list for Josh's, for the dates that we picked out, correct? Does anybody have any major conflicts? I know we tried to look and see if we had any board members that knew they would be unavailable, or we can deal with them as we get closer, there's nothing major. We did have a question about time, so right now, we are at 5:30. I know the question had been asked around before.
Around four?
Had asked, been asked around before.
Going the wrong.
I just want to find the meeting schedule for next month. So before we publish the meeting schedule for next month, what is, what is your guys' thoughts about the meetings at 5:30? Do we want to move to six?
I just feel like it might be hard for our community members to dial in that early.
At six o'clock?
At, at 5:30.
At 5:30?
Yeah.
I think that's an interesting point, and at the same time, I'd love to hear back from the community, like if there was a community survey of, hey, do you, do you watch the board meetings? Is something preventing you the time? And if it is, these are a lot of questions, but like, if it is, like, what's a preferred time? Like, is it six, or is it more like, no, that wouldn't help me, I'm making dinner, is it seven? I don't think changing the meeting time without any data behind it would really be helpful, because then if we change it to six, and parents are still saying, oh no, like, I'm coming home from work, seven will be better for me. Like, I'd rather base it upon community feedback than just pushing it a little bit.
Right, and we do have the option to, it's recorded, so they can always watch it online if they're not able to get here.
I was going to say that, I don't
Or the public comment, yeah.
I do like that, I do, I like the, I like the spirit of asking for community feedback, but I'm very hesitant to do that, and I mean, Josh, you can tell me if I'm wrong from your aspect, I'm very hesitant to do that, because if we start that with one thing, then here we are doing that with everything, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying, should we have it in a library, or should we have it over here? Oh no, we want to get feedback, and I feel like people are going to come if they want to come. I don't take people not being here as a slight that they don't care, because if we look back at those YouTube videos, we get more views on that YouTube video than we have ever had, and I'm just be honest, in my 16 years of counting each year of individual people. When people want to come, they will come, they will make a way. I do agree with the 5:30, I mean, I'll find a little leeway, but I just don't want to be here until eight or nine o'clock. I'm sorry, I'm running a whole business somewhere else, and I don't have time to be sitting here until eight, nine o'clock.
Well, how about?
So I would, I would agree to go to six o'clock, I think that's a little easier, giving a little bit. I know Erin had a question about changing the board times as well. I mean, I don't want to go to 6:30, I don't want to start at seven.
No.
Because I'm going to tell you, now, y'all can go to seven if you want to, I'm not going to be here. I'm just saying, I, I, my life is my life, and some days, I'm still in my office, and so if we want to go to six, we can do that.
What about the general consensus here, as far as getting here at 5:30 or six?
Oh, six is fine, yeah, we, it's no problem. Don't be here.
I don't see a huge difference between the two.
Well, I know you guys, you know, are fairly close, but like, getting here from work, is that a problem?
Not for me, no.
I mean, it's not a problem for me.
I think it's showing good faith too, for those people that, you know, might get off at five or any other time to allow them a little extra few minutes to get here if they need to.
So six o'clock?
So six o'clock we're doing.
Six o'clock, and then do we want to, my only other question in regards to the schedule, do we want to publish the special meetings or do we wanna wait to the beginning, like we'll figure it out month to month? So only post the regular meetings and if we are gonna require a special meeting, we can then add it at the beginning of the month when we send out the things?
I think we should post them all.
Okay.
Um, because that is what our general consensus has been. I don't, I do like how we're streamlining business to be done, but I'd rather post them because I think going into the new year, we want to stay consistent with the working at the work session. And if we don't post them, then I don't wanna not have work, if that makes sense. I don't wanna go month to month, I think that's inconsistent, I think it's hard for people to say, oh, are they having one this month? Are they not? I wanna see them working, that type of deal. So I think we should keep the twenty-two meetings, I think, that are scheduled.
Okay.
And then, just like we do now, if we don't really have much on the agenda, then we go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, that seems.
I think that's.
To make sense for me as well.
And I like that too, and just to be transparent, um, some of the reason, just speaking to the public, the reason we don't have some of our work sessions in the past, what we've done is we brought in the schools then to present. And there really wasn't a work type of session per se. So what we've been doing is bringing them into these type of, to the regular board meetings, having them present. And if there's no need for a work session, there's no need for a work session. However, I agree, I'd rather have them on the books and then as I keep, Josh and I keep you guys updated, hey, we need one this month. I know he's got what, two every year for the budget purposes.
For your, for your forecast?
Those are set in stone, I'm thinking about beginning of the school year, those are always important, rolling those out. I think it's those middle months where we kinda be a more of a month to month basis.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I mean, and I'm thinking, I mean, not that when they don't occur, we're not working, I'm not saying that by a long shot, but I still think with the new administration that we have, more work is going to be coming. And we will slowly start showing those meetings like you desire them to show us working. And I think we're gonna have a lot of work coming forward to do that.
Buckle up.
And, and we do have months where we don't have them, I mean, we got Capitol Conference Month where we don't have a session. We've got August where we don't have a session, a lot of times at the, um, end of the, November is tricky because you got election day is on Tuesday and then you got Capitol Conference. So that causes us to have something in October. Usually we're wrapping up September with the beginning of the school year. So we have months where we really don't have much, but I just don't wanna lose the concept of working that you walked into the door wanting to grow. So we'll go from there. Um, what other, oh, uh, Crystal, other business as well, new and unfinished. We were on that OSB website and you were talking about, there's a couple of training sessions coming up. I don't know if you all seen them on the OSB website. There's a training session about the bathroom bill.
Yeah, that was this morning.
You went, you attended that?
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about just kinda what you, what you perceive, what you got from there and what the, the path of, what it was? Like, were they talking about implementing it? Were they talking about what it looks like?
It was very vague, they talked about how the bills will affect our insurance and whether or not we need to change our policies. Um, and the end result was that he feels like as long as we have a policy in place, right now, he would not suggest changing anything. Um, because they are trying to push back at the federal level on a lot of these bills.
Okay.
So.
Okay. And then, um, the other thing that, um, you spoke about, uh, there was a policy.
At OSBA.
At OSBA that they voted on in the delegate assembly about the public record search and the cost associated going forward with the labor of doing the public record searches.
The cost you can assign back.
Right, so I was explaining to Crystal how, um, yes, they voted on it, yes, it had a new date ratified at the bottom, but I was showing her where some districts will have a policy that is so slim. And then when a law or a policy is adopted by Neola, they have nothing in it at their board, so they have to adopt all of this. So I was showing her how a lot of our policies already have the meat.
Yes.
And there's just a few things that need to be changed, that's why our green was so minimal. So I was showing her that and my question was, um, with your new office, I know, and I'm, I'm not calling names or throwing shade, but we had difficulty keeping up with those at one point in time. What kind of presentation to your office now are you getting with policy updates? Do you get these, Dom, or do you sit at superintendent meetings before they're rolled out and then you come back and you're like, okay, this is a policy that we need to put in? Or are they just shot to your office by email? And that could be an MT question, I'm not sure.
Two avenues, uh, one, I'm spoiled because I have Melissa Thompson and one of her roles and goals, uh, she's unbelievable at it uh, with her experience at the OD, ODE back in the day and her vast knowledge, uh, one of her roles is policies that come down from the state. To answer your question, um, there's a weekly meeting on Fridays that goes through the ESC with key updates that MT, Ms. Thompson, everybody, MT, uh, that, uh, attends, um, on our behalf. She updates me on those at our status meetings. And then the bills such as Senate Bill twenty-nine, the bathroom bill, um, and some other ones, those are always key topics at our first ring superintendent meetings and, and so forth. So Melissa, if you wanna add anything on to that?
No, that's, I'm great, well, I guess, yes, I do. So there are other listeners that I'm involved on that Mr. Cable has included me so that I'm receiving a lot of the updates. And if there was any meeting, any conversation, the ESC recently, um, launched, um, a first ring meeting, PLC for assistant superintendent, so I'm now attending that. And one of the things that they're going to do is include all of us also in the communication that goes out regarding any legislative changes, anything that's happening, things are pending that are sent to the superintendents. They're now also going to include us as well to make sure that we're up to date and in a position to have conversations with our supers.
Okay. And then, maybe I'm just delayed, I'm just a C average person, okay? So when the policies come down, like, for example, they voted in a delegate assembly, that was in November. Does that vote go in, then it has to go through and get worked out through legal in Columbus? And then it's brought into Neola and then brought down to the districts? I just didn't want a new board member walking away like, at one o'clock, we voted on this, so at three o'clock, does it go into effect in my district? So how, can you just briefly say what that path looks like? I think I know, but I wanna make sure.
I can provide the path, I'll say for the purpose of this conversation right now, the short answer is like, when things come up, we watch it, we pay attention and our district attorneys pay attention. Oftentimes, they are a part of some of the conversations and are getting things on the front end.
Okay.
And so anything that could potentially impact one of their, um, districts that they're working with, they're going to automatically send to Mr. Cable information because they have a vested interest in us getting it right.
Right.
So, so they wanna know, you know, that if there's something that is going into play, um, immediate, whatever that is, immediate, maybe relative, but whatever that is, they are often sometimes the presenters or otherwise getting that information. Neola will then provide whatever has been, um, enacted and signed, whatever the case may be. We'll get that policy, sometimes you'll have like a grace period that, you know, some time to get things. Um, but for the most part, we're getting information by way of the groups that were involved in, both Mr. Cable and myself, that's also vetted through our attorneys, that will also come through Neola. So there are multiple paths of making sure that I's are dotted, T's are crossed, and there's almost like that cross-checking reference. So at, at any point that you get something, by all means, um, you know, sometimes things are as introduced, some things are, are as enrolled in, in that, so there, there's a variety of different things, but where I'm always available and willing to look. And if I've missed something, you know, um, by all means, share it with me. I, I try to be on top of it, but certainly if you have something, by all means, give me a line.
Okay.
And just to reference what, uh, Melissa was saying, so tonight, uh, right before we came here, I'm sure she got it too, I got an email from our attorney, blanket email, just not to our district, explaining SB twenty-nine.
Yes.
And, because that went into lame duck. And now they did a few revisions to it. So Ms. Thompson was just saying, when it's gonna affect our attorney's districts, so we're one of those. They send us a recap of it, make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row, make sure our communication plan's proper.
Okay.
And then she crosses every, dots our I's, crosses our T's with everything.
Okay.
And we have great relationships in Columbus because of, of our connections. So we are always able to phone a friend and say, hey, so reading this, we're, you know, looking at this, what advisement do you have? So, um, so I think we're, we're well positioned.
Perfect, so good. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't passing Crystal bad information.
No, it's a lot.
I answered as much as I could and I thought I did a good job, but I just wanted to be sure about that, so that's good. So those training sessions, if you do see them, we were talking about the board handbook at one point and I did see, I know we're still working on it. So some of those questions, I encourage you all, if you got that open, go in there and do those questions on the side because, um, Madeline and somebody else and all of you are answering them and you're looking at them. So please go in there so we can get that complete and get that done. Um, some of the points that were brought up in there were really valid. We gotta remember, like I sent a message, Madeline is doing a great job, but she's just the administrator person that's looking at it. So some of that insight that's coming from us is very helpful. Um, especially like the, the compensation piece and I was saying, withdraw this because it didn't make sense. You don't want people to think that it has to be like this, so take off some of that, so take a look at that. And then we'll be ready to walk through that, um, in the next couple of months or so and have that done.
I had a hard time, hard time putting my comments in.
We know, we'll help you. We got you Catherine, we, we won't leave you out here.
We're gonna get you AI.
Um, any other, Crystal, help me, did I remember everything? I think I got everything. Ashley, did you have any other new and unfinished business?
No.
No? Um, I think that was it. That's all. Uh, item thirteen point three, board policy adoption. The South East Berlinhurst Board of Education approves the following board policies that were previously presented for first read and preliminary review. Policies were presented November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. We've got a revision on policy zero one zero zero, zero one four two point one, zero one five one. And all those in that revision list, because I'm not reading them, they're stapler, they are attached. So may we get a motion to approve item thirteen point three?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Shelby and Mrs. King, any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Any more, any public comment, Mr. Hill, I didn't see any as well.
None.
Hearing none, we do have a need for executive session. Um, it is six thirty-five. We will go into executive session for purposes of employment, compensation, um, probably employment.
So A two?
A two.
Okay.
And we don't need any directors. Um, we do need you and Josh, it's nothing individual, we can go in there together just to take the ice on the cake. I don't imagine we'll be long, we will not be taking any action in executive session or when we come out. So when we come out, we will adjourn to close. May we get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Falkenberg and Mrs. King?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you all for joining us and we will be back to adjourn when we are complete.
I'm on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.